Okay, I would like to call the North Andover School Committee meeting of January 17th, 2019 back to order and start with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undergone, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. So just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and be sure to silence any of your mobile devices. As you can see, I am not Holly Witsky Lynch. She had to go out of town today, so I am filling in for her as chair. So we will start with a public comment. Seeing none, we will move on to student report. I do see Caitlin. Hi Caitlin, Happy New Year.
Hi. How are you guys?
How are you?
So Jack wasn't able to make it because he's going up to New Hampshire, but he sent me some stuff to talk about and I have some of my own. So I was just actually found out about this, that the North Andover High School is going to be hosting like a health and fitness expo. And from what I could see when I looked at the flyer, it seems to be like a combination of like interactive workshops and like activities with like yoga and zumba, as well as having like seminars on like anti-vaping and safety in schools. And then I believe that you, I was told that it was the high schoolers and possibly some eighth graders as well. I don't know if you want to add anything to that? At the senior center.
It's a collaboration between the North Andover Hospital and the HHS here in town.
Great.
The last time we did it was like five years ago. It's a big deal. It's really exciting. It's cheese sheets between us.
And then Jack also told me about how both the boys and the girls track won the indoor D2 state relay titles. So that's pretty cool. As well as the band concert that happened yesterday with the eighth grade and it happened in the auditorium. And then he also told me about how they had a junior college prep fair last week where they got to meet with reps from Holy Cross and Framingham State and he made it seem like he really enjoyed it. So that's always helpful. I think I remember going to it last year and I believe there might have been the same reps, but I know that it was, I really liked the Q and A portion that they provided, so I always, I feel like that's really cool that they're making sure that that's still a part of it.
Did that light a fire under you, the way it has some of the people that I know in my life?
Well, I had already, I, I was kind of like, I'd already visited a bunch of schools by that point, but I know like the people I was sitting with, like they were very, like they would mention something and be like, "Oh, I don't know what rolling decision is." And I'd be like, "Oh." Like it's like this. So it's like, I do feel like people go into it kind of being like, "I know I want to go to college. I don't really know any of the smaller details about like the different sort of like rolling versus regular versus early." And so I feel like it kind of gives people the opportunity to like, they know the big things, but it's like, what are the small little details you need to know?
I'm just gonna add something real quick. I mean, I think it's really important that the kids and parents here are going to use. I was talking with a mom of a senior the other night and, you know, back when I applied and we applied, like things like early action and early decision like were very different. Like people didn't do them at the same percentages, I think, that they do today. And so that has really changed how kids are applying to colleges. And I think, you know, when I think about, you know, kind of going through the process, like you, it was like very few kids who ever did early and everybody found out in kind of like, you know, April or March or something like that. Now, so many kids know. So, I mean, I think that's really important for kids to hear, you know, from, from the reps that, that are coming out and not necessarily going in with their parents' 1980s or 90s preconceived ideas. So that's great. Glad it was well attended.
Yeah. I was like, I was, I'm lucky enough to be like the younger sibling, so just two years ago, my sister had to do it. So they kind of learned from her and passed along to me, but I know not everyone has that. And then the two other things that I want to say is, I know that the blood drive is going to be taking place on Wednesday, the 30th of this month. And I know that throughout this weekend, next week, NHS is going to be at lunches and they're going to start taking volunteers. I will say, if anyone is 16 and wants to do it, they will need to have their parents sign a permission slip. And NHS is really trying to this time around, make sure that we don't sign people up until the permission slip is in. That way we don't take a spot away from someone in case you end up being like, "I don't know if I can anymore." So I definitely think if anyone's interested and they're not able to just sign up right away, I would definitely at the beginning of the week, try and get the permission slip so you can get a spot. And then I also know that, we've talked about parking a lot here and I know that especially like the past week or so, there's been a lot of people like checking parking passes, making sure all of that's good. And I know there was a cop that was in the entrance where it's like no turn in during the like seven through nine zone.
All week they've been doing it, yeah.
Yeah. And so I know that like, that was something that like some people talked about because I think people just do it and they're like, "It's okay," you know, but it's like, it's there for safety for like buses and stuff. And I know like whenever my dad was driving, he'd always be like, "Gosh, those people are breaking the rules." So I think it's cool and it's like, kind of being just like a reminder like, "Hey, not supposed to be coming in here."
Awesome.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Thank you Caitlin.
Thank you Caitlin.
Thank you guys.
All right. We can, we have the consent agenda here for the approval of the minutes from the last meeting.
So, just as a point of somewhat clarification, I will be abstaining because I wasn't in attendance. I don't know about Mr. Tracy, so I don't know if we want to hold these until we have three.
Oh, that's right.
People who are in attendance, even though I did watch some of it, I was quite medicated.
I was gonna say, we were also grateful you didn't come and spear your germs here.
Yeah. So we may want to pause on that one.
I'm fine with that. Any other discussion?
Do you need a motion to table it until the next meeting?
Can you, Chief Palmetiere?
No, I think we could make a motion to do that, sure.
So I move that we table these until the next meeting.
I'll second that.
Motion by Ms. Picard to table the minutes till the next meeting, seconded by Mr. McDevitt. Are we in favor of that?
Aye.
Very good. And there's one thing, I don't know if then I can note something wrong here, but it says approval of the minutes. I did not both make the motion and seconded myself, so.
No.
I think that would have been you, Helen, who seconded. Because Holly would not have, so we can fix that. Great. Superintendent's report.
A couple of quick items. As many of you know, you've heard about town manager Andrew Mailer. And I'm sad for us, but I'm happy for him. I wish him well as he embarks on this new adventure. We will miss his insight, his support and collaborative nature. He's been a tremendous strategic partner and our schools in town have definitely benefited from his leadership. So, I'm happy for him and I hope we get a great replacement. There'll be big shoes to fill. Secondly, the feedback in my attendance to go see Dr. Poty the other night was tremendous. So I've talked to Cheryl Barzac, the director of nursing here in the district, as well as Principal Gonsovs and Jackson at the high school and middle school. And we've committed, we want to bring Dr. Poty in to see the kids. We're not sure of the timeline, funding mechanism, but we definitely want to do it, so it's something we'll work to that end. The only caveat though, as many don't know, is she's a practicing physician. She does not do many daytime events, but I think that my early feel is our that she'll probably be able to do something for North Andover. But she typically does night events and I think that would be difficult to get students to attend and this would be for students. So pretty excited about that. In the past week, I've had the ability to connect with Diana DiZoglio, Ms. Minicucci, and most recently I met with Nguyen Tram, our representative that took over for Jim Lyons out in the three Pringles sinks by Bauxford. And most of that discussion revolved around the foundation budget review. And we had talked about that and really the support, it appears to be growing. So I'm hopeful on those fronts. Additionally, yesterday Jim and I had the unique opportunity to meet with the former Lawrence superintendent of schools, now commissioner of DESE, Jeff Riley, myself, Mr. Mealy, Shelley Berman from Andover. We had a chance to get together for breakfast. And it was nice to hear from him on really where he is at this point in his career. And he talked quite a bit about, really, the importance of SEL in schools. Talked a little bit about, you know, test mating and the pendulum swinging too far, you know, of the bubbling and that, you know, we really need to, we'll always have accountability in testing, but is there a better way to do it? Which was great. And, you know, we also talked about, you know, some of the things in terms of politics as well. For example, you know, the governor had recommended in the supplemental budget, $45 million for mental health in schools and in the senate and legislature, it had reduced it down to six or seven million, you know, mostly for Peds and Training. So we talked about that, we talked about the foundation budget, and we're all hopeful that we get that right, so it's a more fair mechanism for districts. You know, one of the most recent reports I think I read, put together was an analysis, you know, that it might be a $1.8 million increase for North Andover. At the same time, Commissioner Riley talked about the importance of, you know, if there is an opportunity for new money, it's not just about money, it's about having a plan, it's about having a strategic plan, it's about going forward and doing what's best for kids. So that was really terrific. I did speak with Seth Moulton's office today, he had called. They were wondering about furloughed workers and if any of those kids who may be furloughed workers might apply for free reduced lunch. You know, so we did discuss it, you know, if we were offering it. And I just shared with him an advisory from DESE around the laws of free and reduced lunch, you know, a totally yearly income and, you know, audits and reviews and being in compliance. So hopefully they'll be able to think of a few things. They also were wondering if we'd encourage anyone who may be laid off, and I'm not sure, you know, how many we have at this point, if they'd be interested in substitute teaching. And I did tell them, we are always interested in anyone that is, you know, feels they're qualified and can fill in class and substitute for us. So that was interesting. And last, but not least, because I want to turn it over to Ms. Marks, she has one thing to add, but we have ed camp tomorrow. We have districts coming from all over for various things. We have, is it over 90 sessions now, Lorraine?
It's over 90 sessions.
It's over 90 sessions. And we're gonna kick it off in the morning with just 10 minutes with myself, with Jim Mealy in operations, Chief McCarthy from the fire department, Chief Gray and EJ Folds from the police department, Deanna Cruz, the social worker from town. And we're just going to just do a quick debrief around lessons learned. You know, and just a little highlight on that is that we've always worked well together with all these agencies. We plan, we train, but anytime we have an event, we actually get together and have a group and we review and we debrief. And, you know, as a result, I think, not only we have, we had great plans in terms of all the drills and things we do, but evacuation plans, et cetera. I think prior to something that's really unheard of with the gas disaster, I don't think that this, although we have excellent plans in all schools due for evacuation, you know, I don't think that a lot of districts have thought about evacuating all 5,000 students at once if necessary. So we were lucky, it was in the afternoon, we had to evacuate about oh, 463 kids in after school programs, including a couple athletic teams. We had to keep informed. Luckily, we had a school committee member at the soccer game in Beverly that could help us with that. But, you know, as a result, we have really, we have a working committee together with educators, the chiefs, and we really, you know, put some new things in place that are helpful for this year and we'll continue to work going forward for next year. I think one of the things that has come from it is the fire chief has dedicated a liaison, if something like that happened again, that would come with me and travel with me at my side and the police would have a liaison to work with us as well.
That's excellent.
So I'm pretty excited about that and, you know, there's also a recommendation where I can get an app through the town. It's a government app, so I can get a secure dedicated line. As you know, sometimes the cell towers clog and have the ability to do a dismissal on those things. So some really good things have come out of it and we're pretty excited about it. And then we're, after that kickoff, we're heading to the 90-plus sessions. I have two, doing one on the budget and one on entry finding. So I'm excited myself.
What is the second one?
Entry findings and budget.
Entry findings.
Yeah. And that's it. And Lorraine?
I just wanted to share what I think is a pretty impressive accomplishment for our history department head. So he is one of 18 teachers who have been chosen from across America to participate in the study on World War I in Europe. So there were approximately 350 teachers who applied for this, so being one of 18, I think is quite an honor. So part of the project, he will be researching a World War I soldier who did not make it back from the war. And he will have to prepare a eulogy, he's gonna research his whole history, they're gonna be preparing lessons. He'll leave in June of this year and to head over to Europe and they'll visit a number of cemeteries. And he will end on the 100th anniversary of the treaty at Versailles. So I just think it's really an incredible accomplishment and really exciting.
Can you share the name of the?
Yes, Brian Sheehy. Absolutely. Yes. Yes. So I just, I find it very impressive. He has started a history lab at the high school. I invite any of you, contact me, come over and see. I was over there yesterday, I sent Greg a picture which he tweeted out, some students in there. Just in the last two days, 117 history students have gone through the history lab and it's really, you should see what he has in there and what these kids are learning. It's firsthand items that they're really doing inquiry and observation about and it's quite impressive. So please do come over and take a look. But congratulations to Brian.
Certainly congrats. And I asked Brian if he could find out if they needed a superintendent chaperone and they do not.
You're not gonna make him research Alberti Thompson? Are you gonna make him research?
He'll be at the cemetery where Private Alberti Thompson's buried.
He is going to bring something to commemorate Alberti Thompson.
That's awesome.
I know that, you did that a few years ago.
You know, I think North Andover lost three in World War I. One to pneumonia, I believe, up at Fort Dix. That's listed, no one knows that, you'd think it was killed in action and two killed in action, I believe. But I think he's researching somewhere from Lawrence and I think Lawrence had over 35 killed in action. But they're all out of the 26 Yankee Division locally and they're all buried, for the most part, 2,600 at the Battle of Chateau Three, an hour east of Paris. So he'll probably be there because I would guess the Lawrence folks are there as well.
That's a very exciting.
Quarter and on.
Well, start congratulating. Mr. Sheehy did not know about that, that's exciting. Thanks for sharing that. Couple of things, I also really enjoyed the Dr. Poty speaker who came last week. I've talked to several parents as well as some teachers who attended and they're very enthusiastic, very interested in having her come to speak with students. And so that's really great that, I already said to them that, yes, I'm certain that it's being worked on and that is in fact. I don't know that, go ahead.
Oh, the same night, I just want to thank Detective Lieutenant EJ Folds.
Oh yes, I missed that part, okay.
They had the in-plane site activity.
Right.
What parents should look for in the teens and they set up a whole teenage bedroom right in front of the calf.
Yes.
And they were there all night and a lot of parents in and out of the presentations, they had a lot of people through, so.
Yeah, I actually also, I forgot about that. I heard, I didn't get to go through that part, but I heard that that was very informative. So I do appreciate their partnering with us as they have repeatedly, so that's great.
Madam Chair, before you move on, for anybody who wasn't there, first of all, I mean, such a celebration, like 200 parents were there. So we found the secret sauce at getting people to come. I don't know, it was the combination of the advertising and the interest. But anybody who wasn't there, there's a video link with the, with the presentation and the slides on the town website.
Yes.
So if anybody wants to take a look at that, they can go over to the town website and should be able to find that.
Yeah, so that was also wonderful, that she said from the outset, "Take anything that I have here, use it for your own purposes, teach people with it. I don't, I'm not proprietary about it, I want this to be shared." And so I appreciate North Andover Cam doing that videotaping as well. Also want to thank the town manager, Andrew Mailer, for all the work he's done partnering with us over the years as a school-town partnership and obviously just as a citizen, all the work that he has done to make our town a more desirable than ever place to live. So appreciate his work and I'm very excited to find out the next steps on finding his replacement. That's what I have. Anybody else have anything else? Can wait till the end. So now we're gonna move on to the public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget. We have to have a motion to open that public hearing, I believe.
I will move that we open a public hearing for the fiscal year 2020 budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Mr. Tracy. Roll call.
Aye.
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 And aye, the public hearing is open. So I believe how that works is you, people have any questions or any discussion points they want to make, they're invited to come up to the microphone and do that. Say, Stan, come on.
That's where we. Sorry. It's just me.
Stanley, 43 Stone Creek Road. Just a couple of quick questions. Do you all have any plan for starting to set aside funds or money for teaching positions for the middle school since that's next on the list of things where we need to start augmenting staff? Is that somewhere gonna be in the plan down the road? That's rhetorical question, again, you guys can think about that. It might be helpful in the budget because I know you've made a strong investment in special education programs to describe somewhere in the narrative maybe, sort of what the timeframe is for things to happen as a result of that investment. You know, like when the money might, you know, not so much money, but when results might be, start to be available, just so people will know how that's gonna work. You know, we say, we've said that all along, you know, we do this and we, then good things happen. It just might be a nice opportunity to put that in the, in the narrative somewhere so that as we're thinking about all of that, you know, people will know that, you know, the money's been going for, you know, something, something good. So I think that would be another thing. And I haven't heard, but there may be in the budget, are there additional staff needs for the, the early childhood complex? Is that in that budget? I haven't seen any, or are we okay now?
Well, if you look at the budget, and just a quick recap, Stan. So a couple components to it is, one, your first question about the middle school, as you noticed, a joint letter published by myself and Andrew Mailer, we didn't make the next round in the MSBA.
Right.
At this time. Every year is mutually exclusive, so it's really dependent on the needs of the communities who apply at the time. So secondly, you know, when you even, it often takes three, four, or five times to move along in that process. And that process could take several years. Jim, typically, what's our experience of the districts we've studied in our talks with the MSBA, was typically, it takes three, four years just to get in the pipeline?
A lot of them have about five years before they get approved.
Mm-hmm. So, you know, we are applying again, but I think it's also something that, you know, as a committee and as a group and as leaders in this town, we have to take a look at what are the other mechanisms, what are the other options, you know, put everything on the table to take a look at what are the other, what else can we do to look at those spaces? So we have the objective facts of what that may be to add that addition to the middle school that has our highest class size. So I really think tackling that first is the most important before we add anything into the budget in terms of reducing class size, just at this time, that may be something strategically in the multi-year plan we want to do. So that's number one. Number two, there were some unanticipated costs of the AB/ECC this year. Some of those will be not recurring costs, you know, along with a little bit of site work, some kitchen stuff, some staffing to get it up and running. But as you see in the budget, there's an increase of .2. Dr. Rogers will be moving on and we'll, we need two full-time administrators to run the building. So we've just posted for a campus principal to be in charge of the entire site. So there is a proposal, if you attended a school committee meeting, the second one of this year, we use turnover savings to add two additional teaching assistants, special educators. So that's what we added this year. And what was your last question, Stan?
About the special education investment and payback.
Yeah, so last year, Dr. Price had put a couple programs in at the cost and I think it, we, you know, in the first year, you typically don't see any savings.
Right.
What I can tell you is this, if we brought three kids back out of district or prevented three from going out, the programs would pay for themselves.
Right.
We know we need programming. I talked with the PTO presidents this morning and one of the key things that I said is, you know, one of the challenges you have to look at is, well, you know, with the finances we have, being fiscally responsible, working with the town manager, it's really important when we think about that programming, because if, say, we cut it, you know, so we could add something else, if we wanted to have the ability to go out and recruit a kid to come back, parents are typically very leery and not looking to send someone to a program that doesn't exist or that is brand new.
Right.
So we believe that it was really important for us to keep those, but we also worked with Andrew Mailer and I appreciate his work so that we can continue to address one or two needs that I found in the entry findings where I saw over 1,135 people. And more importantly, how do we continue to attack the goals that were approved at the June 21st school committee meeting last June for the 1819 year?
Right.
Currently, so.
Just one more quick question. Recently, there was some information that made it sound as though there was some additional money that was gonna be made available to the three towns affected by the gas crisis that they could use. I, it wasn't clear whether they could use that as their own discretion, at their own discretion, or whether that was gonna be designated for something. Is that money that the school department could use to try to help any students or families who are affected by the gas crisis? I don't know what that might involve, but I have to assume there was some impact on students and families.
You know, I think that would probably be a better question for Andrew Mailer. I believe that all of those talks are still going on in terms of the three communities working with Columbia Gas. I can tell you, we've done extensive outreach in terms of transportation and we've been able to build some transportation for kids who are in hotels and different things to a line item at Town Hall that goes to Columbia Gas. And more importantly, many of you may not know, and I'm gonna have her here, she'll be there tomorrow in our ed camp, besides all of our terrific counselors and Lorraine Marks doing her work with Dr. Straight and getting all of our folks up to speed, identifying families, providing coats, all sorts of things. We have a new social worker that's based out of Town Hall. Her name's Deanna Cruz. She's in LICSW. She speaks a couple languages and she's really terrific. And she's been a really terrific liaison with us to help address those needs and she was a great additional resource. One of the things I will propose is for Town Council Egan to put together a memorandum of agreement so that we can share information with her, just like we do with the youth center, so that we can continue to meet the needs of folks in need.
Good idea. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, can I entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
So I move that we close the public hearing on the fiscal 2020 budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, seconded by Mr. Tracy. Roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Thank you very much. The whole businesses, the budget. Any, does anybody have any questions or any other things you wanted to add? I know we've talked about it a lot, but.
Yeah, just for the public at home or anyone else, we included in the agenda. Jim, is it linked to the agenda or was it?
It is.
Okay.
The presentations. I'm not sure what's on.
We'll get it linked tomorrow. It's really just a very abridged version for folks to be able to see. It's about four pages. It really is easy to follow, easy to understand. Obviously, we have all the documents, including the executive summary, the PowerPoint from last time. You can watch it on cam. It plays frequently, but you can also get it live on demand. And more importantly, within the exec, within the budget page, not only does it have the PowerPoint and presentation, the executive summary, it has backup data and all the relevant things needed that we typically produce at this time.
Anybody have any questions or comments based on the presentations we've had?
No, I think I had most of my questions answered previously, so.
Great. Thank you. All right, so new business, we have received the annual report from the Crest Collaborative. Helen's our, Ms. Picard is our liaison to that group. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to share specifically, Helen?
No, I would just, I think it's important that you know that we're required to review this document. I don't believe that we're required to take a vote that we've seen it or anything like that, but the state does require that all the school committees review the collaborative.
I thought it was a very clear report, actually, so.
Yeah, they do, they do a good job putting it together, we spend a lot of time, you know, looking at it, talking about it.
And we have about, what, three or four students at Crest? So far as I know, four at this point?
We have five now.
Five now?
Five now.
Is that, is that less than we used to have? I feel like we used to have a pretty good amount.
Yes, that is less than we used to have. It's a combination of things, we've done a lot of work, as Dr. Gilligan had mentioned, in bringing students back into the district to support the programming that we've put in place and looking at what student-specific needs are. We've looked at other collaboratives as well, so we have students at five collaboratives at this point.
I've always heard great things about it. I know some students who have been and their parents have been very pleased with Crest, so.
Great, thank you. Do we have any school building committee update?
I don't think there's much of an update, I think, you updated them last time, Jim?
Yes, you did.
Yes, I did. I think, yeah, we probably know further updates, I think we're just holding about thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars back when they have to come back in the spring to do some small little work. If you're done, just the paving one.
The paving is town, right, or is that them?
That's the town, that's the town, part of the contract, but.
We're cooperating in order to get it done before.
Right, 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 okay.
I would say we could probably remove that from the agenda going forward.
Okay. Thank you. And do we have any public comment?
Stan?
I had something, and I, I.
You have fifteen seconds.
I am just going to ask, as long as I, since I don't see David that much. We have.
I'm sorry, sir, what is your name?
Stanley Perd forty-three Stone Creek Road.
Thank you, sir.
I was just wondering, as part of the, finalizing the ABECC about the stones. Have you, did you give that any thought or is that, shall I get the dumpster out?
No.
We have not dismissed that at all yet. I think, I think we need to wait and see what the spring brings and see how the final landscaping shapes up. Nothing, first of all, the architect that we talked to about it, who was looking at it, was let go from the organization. What, what was, I can't remember his kid's name. He was a.
From KBA?
Yeah, well, KBA was still the architect, but he had his own working for them. And then Hugh wasn't working for them anymore, so I don't know how that ended up. But I think, you know, when the weather gets better, we can reexamine it and stuff, whatever. We have some money available to help.
Yes, yeah, there still is, there still is money available, so we ought to, we ought to use it if we, if you want to.
Was that CPA funds?
Yes, it was, yeah. And the other thing I just wanted to mention is that we have in the pipeline stands for the two plaques for the bell.
Right.
That will be manufactured soon and then we'll, again, in the spring, once the weather gets better, we'll do something there and you all can have whatever appropriate ceremony or something or other. So that will be something we'll also accomplish in the next several months as we get that completed. So that'll be a nice, another nice project we can finish up, so just an update on that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stan. Any other public comment? Does anybody have anything to share before we adjourn?
I have a couple of things. So one of my responsibilities is to serve on the Health Advisory Committee. And it's such an impressive group and we regularly have, you know, twenty people from public safety to the youth center, nurses, it's a really great group, Nikki Murphy, Lorraine Cum. So a couple of things came out of that that I just want to remind everybody. Flu season has not peaked yet and it is not too late for you to get your flu shots. So please get that. Our schools have not had a lot of flu yet and it would be great if we could keep them, you know, keep kids in school, keep teachers healthy, right, everybody knock on wood. And another thing that I think is pretty exciting is that our nurses have identified a need to teach our younger children about how their bodies and brains work with some change in curriculum stuff. And Carla Larkham is working collaboratively with our nurses to try to figure out how to do that. So those are just some exciting things that are happening, you know, behind the scenes and out in the world. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll just say, I mean, I know that you said it and Dr. Gilligan, but a little bit surprised to see the news for Andrew Mailer. I think it was Tuesday morning, but not surprised at the same time. And just really want to publicly thank him for all of his support in the town and for the schools. And I know that the Comptroller's Office will be in great hands with him, so.
Lucky as members of the state.
I just want to recognize my intern for the winter. Ben, if you could stand up for a second. This is Benjamin Witten, he is a junior at Holy Cross and he had to do some hours around school in terms of an internship. So over the past three weeks since before the holiday recess, he has served lunch duty at the ABECC. He's been outside lunchtime monitor, he's opened up several Go-Gurts and moved on to the sergeant's school where he helped in the shock tank, which is a sensory motor room. And he was excellent there as well as helping out administratively in the front office. More recently, he moved on to the high school and he did some working guidance with Ms. Pinkston. And last but not least, he's attended, I think this is his third school committee meeting, and he's done some review and looking at the budget to find out more about how the process works in the community. So I'm really thankful for him. He did a lot, he had quite an experience and he's going to write up a reflection for me about all these different things so that I can write him a letter back to Holy Cross telling him how wonderful he was, so.
Thank you, Ben.
Nice job, Ben.
Sounds very interesting. Sounds like you probably learned a lot.
Yeah, I did.
Good, thank you. So I would love a motion to adjourn that I might be able to catch my sixth grader's very first band concert, that is almost over.
So I will move that we adjourn the school committee meeting.
Wow, thank you for, I would say thank you for that support.
I was just going to say, January thirty-first?
So rule call.
Aye.
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 Aye, thank you all very much, thank you.